Water, sewer, streets, public buildings, and solid waste collection are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on Public Works Service and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these systems and programs, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of Public Works personnel, and whereas the support of an informed citizenry is critical to the efficient operation of our Public Works Department. Now therefore, I, Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me in the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week in Longmont, and invite all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our Public Works and to recognize the contribution which Public Works personnel make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. So, I would assume it was going to be Dale. Go ahead and say a few words, Dale.
Mayor Coombs and members of the council, Dale Rattamaker, Public Works and Natural Resources, and first of all, thank you very much for that proclamation. And I have just a couple of words to say, and then I want to invite someone who's far more interesting than me to come down and talk with you a little bit about some of the things we have planned for next week, and that's Holly Milley, who does a great job for our department in our media relations and our public information outreach. One of the things that's really important in Public Works, and of course, in all areas of the city, of course, are the people and our staff. And, you know, I'm honored to be given the privilege of being the director for that department for just a couple of years. And it really does mean a lot. It means a huge amount to be able to work in your community that you love, that you grew up in. And I know a lot of our staff are the same way, because a lot of our folks, first of all, either graduated with them in high school, or they are members here in our community. And so, that says a lot about our community. And we also have a long tenure with our folks. Many of us have been here for 20, 30 years, which I think also speaks volume, that this is a great organization to work for. And I also want to, of course, thank Harold for the leadership he provides us and the leeway that he gives us to get our job done, to do the best that we can every day. We are privileged and honored to serve the citizens of Longmont, and we absolutely try to do the best we can every day. Some days are better than others, but know that we are doing our best. Just a few things that I want council to sort of have on your calendar. This is really going to be a year of celebration of Public Works. First one is coming up next Thursday, is the opening of Sunset Street Bridge. And we've got some events planned around that for next Thursday afternoon. Hope you can all make it, and could be. I was thinking more like scooter races across it. So, that's coming up, which will be fun. And then, Canamota Park is going to be reopening to the public. And that's going to be happening on, the pool is going to reopen on May 27th, just in time for summer to get underway. And we'll be coming out with more information on that as we get closer to it. Right after that, we're going to be opening the new Quail Tenants Complex. That's going to be happening around June 4th, with a sort of a soft opening, with the grand opening planned by June 11th. Sounds like there's food at that one, so you might circle that one. That looks like a fun one. Other projects that are also underway is to reconnect Rogers Grove, where we hold Rhythm on the River every year, back across the St. Rain to Sunset, under our brand-new Sunset Street Bridge, down the temporary but passable Greenway Trail, get you all the way down into the Pratt Street area. And so, that is also underway to get that reconnection made, because I know there's a lot of folks in Longmont that like to bike and walk into Rhythm on the River. So, that work is working fast and hard to be done before Rhythm on the River. Two other quick ones, Dickens Park, sort of the long-awaited beginning of Dickens Park. If we hadn't had that little flood in 2012, we'd probably already be enjoying Dickens Park. But, you know, believe it or not, I think we're actually going to have a cooler park now. I think Mother Nature has redirected the river in ways that are going to make it a more creative and a more interesting park to be in than what we probably would have had. That gets under construction this year. And then, of course, you may have noticed, we're rebuilding that bridge over Main Street. I don't know if any of you have seen that or not, but that one, we are pushing for a late-fall opening ahead of the holidays, also coinciding in timing with getting all the work done on South Main. Yay. That has been a pain for us, or a challenge. I shouldn't say that it's a pain, but it's been challenging, and it's been even more challenging for the businesses along Main Street. And all the more reason for us to work as fast as we can. So, without further ado, I'd like Holly to come down and talk with you a little bit about the report that's on your desk, and some of the other events for this week.
Great. Thanks, Dale. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council members. So, since 1960, the American Public Works Association has sponsored National Public Works Week, and this year, the city has several events planned for residents of all ages to promote awareness in the community about the services that the Public Works and Natural Resources Department provides. So, I'll just give you a quick rundown of some of the special things happening next week. On Monday, May 16th, we will be holding the Big Projects Plus Open House. So, this will feature a lot of the projects that were at the Open House on March 1st, plus even more. So, we also are going to have a mini film festival of sorts, because the event's being held at the Longmont Museum, and we're going to take advantage of the new Stewart Auditorium to show several short videos that the city has produced on different projects and programs, as well as we'll be showing the documentary film Trees in Trouble, which is a really great look at how invasive species are threatening America's urban forests, and it will include Emerald Ash Borer, and so I think it'll be very timely for Longmont residents. Also this week, we're having special storytimes at the library, where Public Works and Natural Resources staff will be reading to children and answering questions about the work that they do. We also have partnered with the museum to offer a special community heroes-focused discovery days, Wednesday through Friday next week. And the library will have a special evening program for adults and teens that will focus on water for Longmont, and look at the past, understand the present, and imagine what the future looks like. So, that's Thursday evening. And then, finally, throughout the week, residents will be getting in their mailboxes the first-ever Public Works and Natural Resources Annual Report. And so, this was designed to be a very high-level overview of all the services and projects that Public Works and Natural Resources did last year. You each have a copy there at your desk, and I hope you'll thumb through it. We made special efforts to call out your dollars at work, resident tips, and generally, services that we think it's really important for residents to know that they can take advantage of. So, I hope that you all hear good things back about that, but we would love to hear whatever feedback you might hear from residents. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Holly.
That concludes our presentation. Other than I want to say, I didn't know it started in 1960, but it's a great year. This year is born, so must have been good things there.
Okay, now it's time for... Okay, now it's time for... on the list is Diane Woods. Please come down and state your name and address for the record.
Diane Woods, 6914 St. Rain Road, Longmont, 80503. And, good evening, you know, Mayor Coombs and council members. I'm going to be addressing the last item on the agenda for legalizing the sale of marijuana in Longmont. First, I must say and tell you that I voted to legalize marijuana in Colorado. Marijuana's not addictive, although many would have you believe that it is. There have not been any statistics shown that there is an increase in children using marijuana in Longmont. Certainly, no underage person would be able to purchase any marijuana in a recreational or medical shop. You're videoed, and you have to show identification. Throughout the U.S., drugs have been illegally sold to adults and children. This has been going on forever. Doctors prescribe serious opioids, painkillers such as oxycodone, morphine, and when the prescriptions run out, and doctors do not issue additional prescriptions, the user patient tends to go to cocaine, heroin, methamphetamine illegally. It seems that every couple of years, the FBI, together with local law enforcement people in Longmont, uncover a local group illegally making methamphetamine in Longmont. Yes, that's a hard one. These drugs are addictive, and man, when you see a person's face and watch them taking it, it destroys them, their mind and their body. Nicotine is addictive. I smoked when I was young, and it took me a year to free myself of nicotine, and that was back in the days when you didn't have a patch or no medical aid to quit smoking. Alcohol is addictive. I'm not a teetotaler. I like beer, wine, cocktails, but I drink socially and responsibly. We have breweries popping up all over in Longmont. It's great, I like beer. But if you drink too much, you better not drive. And prescribed medicines for pain have warnings not to drive or operate machinery when the drug is taken. This warning is really ignored by many people too often. So, for persons extremely concerned about children taking marijuana, I say to parents, talk to your children, not only about drugs, but about drinking and smoking. Drugs have been available illegally for years, and this has been happening. My basic point is that we have illegal trade in serious drugs. Concern should be in this area and not in marijuana. I also would encourage the United States to support our researchers to explore the benefits of marijuana, because I think they could be very beneficial with people's health concerns. And I thank you for listening to me, and good night, because I'm almost 79, and I'm going to go to bed.
Thank you, Diane. Hal Morrison?
Good evening, esteemed council, city staff, citizens of Longmont. My name is Hal Morrison. I've lived at 236 Sunset Street for more than half my life. Excuse me. With the Sunset Street Bridge opening in a couple of weeks, I must take this opportunity to once again point out reasons a lowered speed limit through our Sunset neighborhood is warranted. This section of Sunset, from the tracks at Isaac Walton North to Third, is a narrow, two-lane residential street, so narrow that on-street parking isn't allowed. On trash pickup days, carts lining the street, Sunset is barely two lanes wide. Within these two blocks are six neighborhood streets that tee into Sunset, six. Additionally, there's 29 driveway cuts through the curb. Between the tracks and the bridge, there are four very busy entrances, serving the City Parks Facility, Isaac Walton Park, and Native Roots. Sunset serves a major north-south bike route. Signage just below Third instructs southbound bikes to use the full lane. Because there is no bike lane from the bridge until partway up the slope, northbound riders must also use the full lane. Between the bridge and Boston Avenue, pedestrians are forced to walk in traffic, due to curb, gutter, and sidewalk still missing along 54 feet on the west side of Sunset and 375 feet along the east. The 12-second-longer drive by changing the speed limit down to 25 is well worth the added safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motors to entering or exiting from heavy traffic. The speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour is warranted along this undersized section of Sunset Street. Finally, lowered speed limits are common on many Longmont neighborhood collector streets, as the following examples will show. These are all currently posted 25 miles per hour. Olive Third, west of Main. Bowen, between Boston and Third. Martin, north of Third. And Missouri, west of Main. Also, Sunset, north of Third. Francis, between Third and Ninth. And Longspreek, west of Bowen. All these streets are wide enough for some on-street parking or parking on both sides. Some of these streets are wide enough for both parking and bike lanes, but they're posted 25. I appreciate council's careful consideration of this matter, and ask that you direct city staff to reset the speed limit to 25 miles per hour before the bridge opens.
Thank you. Tyler Henson?
Mayor, council members, my name is Tyler Henson, and I'm not a resident of Longmont. I actually live in Littleton, but I'm here to discuss your, propose at the end of your calendar about the marijuana legalization. I'm asking you to proceed with that. I am the president of the Colorado Cannabis Chamber of Commerce that makes up about 53 parent companies that employ over 1,700 individuals across this great state of Colorado. Our membership stretches from Boulder all the way to Trinidad. So far today, our industry has employed over 25,000 individuals in this industry with an average, average median salary of $13 an hour. Those are real jobs, and that's a real payroll. And not only are we good stewards of our economy, but we're excellent stewards of our community as well. And I think just having this on-year docket is a step in the right, in the right direction. This industry has done a lot for this state, especially for our state coffers when we look at budget crisis and revenues, and also for the ancillary programs that our tax revenue supports. And I think Longmont could benefit greatly from adding an additional tax to recreational marijuana for any type of anomalies that your budget may have, especially for community programs, anti-bolting efforts, substance abuse programs would be very beneficial. I would say that this industry is very heavily regulated. We're regulated more than the manufacturing and distribution of dynamite. And so, when we take one positive step of having people purchase marijuana in the recreational market, we're taking a little bite out of the black market, where this product is grown unregulated. It's grown in residential properties that decrease the value of residential neighborhoods, and it's put in a system where this product is tested not just for residual solvents, for pesticides, homogenity, and ensures this product is safe for human consumption. Now, unlike any other industry, I hear a lot about people, about the children, how we get to keep this out of the hands of kids. A lot of that comes with education, but for the most part, it doesn't come for the recreational marijuana. If you go into a recreational marijuana dispensary, on average, your ID is checked a minimum three times. It's stored in a child-resistant package with plenty of warning labels on that package, how to consume that product, the effects of that product, and the potency. So, I ask you to please consider moving forward your step. I'd be more than happy for our organization to help you with that. We have worked at the state level and in the local level to ensure that this industry is well-regulated, and there's sensible legislation that allows these businesses to thrive and to employ upstanding individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Preston Whitfield?
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Preston Whitfield. I'm at 3813 Mountain View Avenue. I've been a homeowner and resident of Longmont for 12 years, been a business owner of an outstanding Colorado corporation for 10 years. We're a natural bliss, a landscape designer-construction firm. I'm here tonight to speak on the possible options of legalizing marijuana in the city of Longmont. 16 years ago, when I identified what a natural bliss would be, it was healing, relaxing, and inspiring through nature, which was set to evolve into cannabis as legalization happened, and we're sitting at that point right now. Again, like I said, I've been operating business here in Longmont for 10 years, and I have teamed up with a group of professional individuals who, like myself, are interested in doing business here in Longmont. Elite Cannabis is one of those elite botanicals, and these guys, they already have a great reputation of being professional and outstanding, as well as my company, and a couple of other teammates. But our mission and what we would like to do is come in and show the world what cannabis means, and cannabis without borders. And we're one of the only places in the world that has this opportunity to do it in the way that we, that we are. And what that means is that means hemp. When you guys step outside tonight, you'll see that there's a hemp road bus out there, hemp road trip bus, and bro, that is a part of an educational component. But anyway, it's, that would be what we would be looking to do, and at this point, we could have options to do some business around here, but we'd be sitting on the outside borders, kind of like the rest, looking in. And we would rather team up and make this a win-win for the city of Longmont and for our business. We're professionals of high liberty, high level of integrity in the businesses that we're currently in, and would like to share our passion and grow that passion with the city of Longmont. We, I really applaud the fact, in reading what you guys are studying through, that you're looking at a high level of wanting to do, a high level of people to be in the industry, and I applaud that, and would like to be, you know, help you with that if necessary. I've read and understand the impact report, and I understand the issues that we're facing with the legalization of marijuana. But I remind you that marijuana is way safer than alcohol, and we all have come to understand that with the basis of Amendment 64. Yet, we're sitting in a city, and I'm, I like alcohol, but we drive in from Boulder, and we're greeted by a big beer can. And alls I'm asking is to give us another option, a safer alternative, for the people and the 58% of the people who voted for it in the very beginning, to have it. I understand where we are. I am just asking you guys tonight to, please, let's move forward with the policy research that you're looking for, and let's get it on the vote and show that the citizens of Longmont really do want this as a safer alternative and for the medicine that they're looking for. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Lon Stevens?
Okay, my name is Lon Stevens. I live at 1722 Tuscany Court. Thank you, Mayor Coombs and council, for letting me speak. I just found out about the, talking about the marijuana, it's possible to sell the marijuana here a couple of days ago, so I'm not prepared to give a good presentation, but I wanted to share my voice, that I know myself and a lot of others feel the same way. I'm against it. I have a friend that is pretty involved in government in Lyons, where they have a number of marijuana dispensaries. He says that, some of his conversations, there was a foreign business that was interested in investing into the city. They came out for a tour, noticed how many dispensaries there were, especially for how much, how small of a population Lyons is, and was asking why they had so many, and ended up, because of how many medical or marijuana dispensaries they had, decided not to invest into the community. Yeah, we are one of the few states, I didn't vote for it, that has medical marijuana, and a few other states have done it. It's still illegally federally, and then there's a lot of countries that don't allow it, and so I think it just looks bad. There are plenty of dispensaries around here. There's some that are just outside, there's in Longmont. I have to drive 30 minutes to go to REI, so it won't be a big deal if they need to drive a little bit longer to get their marijuana. I strongly urge the city to maintain a ban on marijuana inside the city limits, to help keep a family-friendly and safe environment here in Longmont. Thank you.
Christine Cavalier?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Christine Cavalier at 1609 St. Circle, 80504. This is my first time here at a meeting, and I, like Lon, have not prepared a polished presentation, but I'm speaking from my heart. I also would hope that in considering whether or not to go forward with researching, lifting the ban on selling marijuana here in Longmont, that you would consider a few things. The first thing I would hope you consider would be, what would the constituents think now? I know there's been some talk about what constituents voted for when the marijuana law was passed. That was several years ago, and that was before what we knew the social experiment was going to be like. I would be curious to take a poll, or vote, or go out and talk to your constituents now to see what their feelings are, now that we've seen what is going on with it. My second question I'd hope you consider is, how is legalized marijuana viewed by outside businesses, like Lon mentioned? I have worked with the Longmont Economic Development Partnership, and I would hope we would consider how outside businesses view our community. If we were to have a lot more dispensaries here, would businesses maybe not consider relocating their workforce and businesses that would bring additional revenue to our community if we had more dispensaries? The third thing I would hope you would consider is, what is the true cost benefit of having more dispensaries in our community? There's been talk about the tax revenue that could possibly be brought to our community, but what are also the costs of that? I was formerly on the board of our center, and there was a lot of discussion at our center about additional services needed by people who are utilizing more marijuana. So, I would just hope that would be something we consider, what additional services are going to be needed if we have a lot more readily available dispensaries here. And the last thing I would say, I think one of the other speakers said, you know, we need to have a safer alternative available here in Longmont. And again, we already have two dispensaries by de facto, having the Boulder County dispensaries within our bounds of city, so there already are two dispensaries here that are easily accessible as a safer alternative for those people who think that's a safer alternative. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ashley Weber?
Hi, my name is Ashley Weber, and I live on 3522 Feather Reed Avenue, and I am here to talk about the lift on the ban here in dispensaries in Longmont. I would love for you guys to lift the ban. I was here a couple of weeks ago in regards to the ban on dispensaries, and I wanted to remind you to think about it a long, a long time before you got to vote on it here today. And I'm here on behalf of Colorado Normal, and as, as the city council members, I know the lady and the gentleman before are worried about who will come in, but I think that's your guys' decision, and you guys ultimately get to make that decision, and I think that that makes it worth it. Also, as well as accessibility, some people, it's, it's not easy to drive to Boulder County or even to the outskirts of town, even though there are two. They, there's not very many different options that they offer, so to bring in other dispensaries, there would be a better variety to choose from, and I think that... that we need to take that into consideration as well. I'm a consumer of cannabis myself. I use it for pains, spasticity, and overall health. And I think that we need to bring education into this, and remember that, that working together, and we heard from many people who are willing to help, help set this up, and they're from Denver, and they've been through this, and they've been through many different changes that's gone on. So you've got plenty of help, and I just want to let you know that Colorado Normal is here to help as well. And as a chapter leader of Parents for Pot, I'm here to educate parents on how to discuss this with their children and overcome that. It's just like talking to your children about alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you. Devin Lyles, I think it's L-I-L-E-S?
Good evening, Devin Lyles. I came here from Boulder, where I am a business owner, I'm one of the owners and the CEO of The Farm in Boulder. We also operate a medical dispensary there called Root. I'm here to encourage you to continue down the path of discovery, to finding out, and hopefully getting some more objective information about the impacts of legalization here in Colorado. Specifically, I want to discourage you from taking the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Report as an objective source of information. This is from a government agency whose very existence depends upon prohibition. We believe that the citizens of Colorado, and indeed, 58% of your own citizenry, have decided that the war on drugs is an abject failure, marijuana is a safe alternative to alcohol, and that with regard to the discussion about our children, we've decided to have a more substantive conversation with our kids. You know, I'm a father as well, and prior to my entry into the marijuana industry, I was a marriage and family therapist. So the context in which I view my involvement in the industry is much larger than just my business interests. I too am concerned about the impact on our community and on our kids, and I know that we can have a more sophisticated conversation with them, that they can understand, understand that, no, this isn't a harmless drug. It is a drug for adults only, and one that should be used in moderation, just like all substances that are legal. So I ask you to consider that and to continue your investigation. I have brought some material here for you that I will leave, and, you know, please consider us as a resource. Finally, we'd like to say, we, you know, we have about 100 employees in our company in Boulder, 20% of which live in your town. And we estimate that as much as 10% of our sales are to Longmont residents. So I thank you for your time, and please consider this further.
Thank you so much. Well, that ends our first call, public invited to be heard. Now we are going to move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Coombs, your first item on consent is ordinance 201632, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2016. Public hearing and second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for May 24th. Item 8B is, it's two ordinances. The first one is ordinance 201633, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.12 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Solid Waste Collection. And the second ordinance is ordinance 201634, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 14.12 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Collection of Compostable Materials. Both of these ordinances have a public hearing and second reading scheduled for May 24th. Item 8C is ordinance 201635, a bill for an ordinance approving the lease agreement between the city and Oligarchy Irrigation Company. The public hearing and second reading is scheduled for May 24th. Item 8D is ordinance, it's two ordinances again. Ordinance 201636, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the agreement with Kim Kanake and Susan Conley, including the conveyance of a portion of Colorado Avenue to Kim Kanake and Susan B. Conley. Ordinance 201637, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease a portion of the real property known as the Pavlakas Open Space to Kim P. Kanake and Susan B. Conley. The public hearing and second reading for both of these ordinances is May 24th. Item 8E also includes two ordinances. The first one is ordinance 201638, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 2.94.040 of the Longmont Municipal Code on the powers and duties of the Airport Advisory Board. The second one is ordinance 201639, a bill for an ordinance amending Sections 4.64.030 and 4.64.040 of the Longmont Municipal Code on the Airport Enterprise Fund. The public hearing and second reading for both ordinances is scheduled for May 24th. Item 8F is a resolution 201626 approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for Support and Services. Item 8G is resolution 201647, approving the transfer of property tax revenue and certain amounts of the general fund, fund balance, to the Village at Peaks Fund to make the 2016 payments on the certificates of participation. Item 8H is resolution 201648, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County to provide pro-social activities to prevent substance use among youth. Item 8I is resolution 201649, appointing and acting municipal judge. Item 8J is approve and authorize the mayor to sign an economic development agreement between the city and Chroma Dex Incorporated. And item 8K is adopt the city of Longmont's 2016-2017 water supply and drought management plan. And staff would like to pull Items E and J for short presentations.
Councilmember Moore?
I'd like to pull 8D.
Councilmember Peck?
I'd like to pull 8A, 2016-32.
Councilmember Bagley?
I would like to pull nothing, and move the consent agenda minus 8A, 8D, 8E, and 8J.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Let's vote on the consent agenda minus 8A, 8D, A, and J. And that passes seven to zero.
Your next ordinance is, second reading and public hearings. First item is ordinance 201629 and 30, the Bon Farm Agreement, Annexation Agreement Amendment, Resoning and Concept Plan Amendment. I'm not going to read these ordinances at this time, because Katie Guthrie is going to introduce this and ask that this be postponed.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and Councilmembers. I'm Katie Guthrie, Senior Planner. And due to an error in sending out the notice for this item's second reading and public hearing, staff requests that this item be postponed to May 25th, excuse me, to May 24th, which is a date for which public noticing requirements will be met.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So Eugene, can we take this as an item or individually?
Mayor and Council, I think you can take them together.
So I would move that we postpone 9A until May 24th.
All right, that's been moved in second. Let's vote.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get your vote. There you go.
Can that pass a seven to zero? Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 201631, a bill for an administrative ordinance approving the Habitat for Humanity, the St. Brain Valley Incorporated contract, to buy and sell real estate for the conveyance of 8 Marshall Place to Habitat for Humanity of the St. Brain Valley Incorporated. And there is no formal staff presentation on this item, but I believe Kathy Bedler's here to address questions.
Mayor Coombs, point of order?
Yes.
I received, I received an email from a constituent that just said, "The sound is not working for live streaming of the council meeting. Can you please have the filming person turn the sound on?" So I mean, I've passed along the information, and the sound's not working, so.
Just unfortunately, the sound won't work, because the filming person has nothing to do with the live stream, so.
All right. So don't pass along the information.
Okay. So there's no presentation from staff on... I guess I'm, since there's no questions, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on ordinance 2016-30. Seeing for the public who'd like to speak on this? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2016-31. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2016-31.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. And Councilmember Christensen?
I heartily would like to endorse this. I spent Saturday working on a Habitat for Humanity, affordable housing over by Southmore Park. It was lots and lots of fun, but more importantly, these are the guys who know how to give us affordable housing, one nail at a time. And that's their sole mission, so I think they'll do a good job.
Thank you. All right, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, could I interrupt for just one moment?
Sure.
So the livestream is working on thelongmontchannel.com, if you can read my lips. And otherwise, we are having an audio stream problem on the computer in the back, so it isn't Channel 8's issue, but you can still watch it livestream, thelongmontchannel.com.
What was it?
Thelongmontchannel.com. Yeah, sorry about that. We'll hopefully get it fixed for next week.
All right, the first item removed from consent is item A.
And that was pulled by Councilmember Peck.
And that's the additional appropriations ordinance, and Teresa's here to answer your questions.
Hey, Councilmember Peck?
I just have actually one question that I didn't understand. When the funds were off, when it says they're offset by miscellaneous funds, the appropriations, what exactly does that mean? Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Peck, Teresa Malloy, Budget Manager. So when we reference what you just stated, that funds are offset by miscellaneous revenue, I believe, is that what that says?
Miscellaneous funds, the same thing.
Miscellaneous funds. So that could be some miscellaneous revenue that we collect. It could be not typically a donation or a grant, because those we'll call out separately.
Exactly.
Just miscellaneous-type revenues that were not included in our original appropriation.
So we don't know where those funds are actually coming from?
We do, we do. Is there a particular one you're looking at?
No, I just saw several on there, and I noticed that the other ones were highlighted by grants or from a specific fund, and so I was just curious. Miscellaneous funds, it's so general, I was kind of curious.
Yeah, they're just miscellaneous that don't fall into one of those other categories.
Okay.
But if you have one in particular, you know, we can certainly let you know what that one is.
Okay, thanks, Teresa.
Councilmember Christensen?
Teresa, I have one more question. Sorry. The, could you explain what the Emergency Automation Project is? There are two of them, but, and each has a $25,000 thing, but I just didn't know what the project is.
I'm going to let Sandy explain this, actually. Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, this is a grant that's received by the Office of Emergency Management by the state, and essentially what we have decided to do with it this last year was really beef up the EOC operations. And so our Enterprise Technology Services folks went in and put in some additional monitors, some additional connectivity, some ways, so that once we, you know, if we need to use the EOC the way we did in 2013, that it's much more ready for those types of feeds. And so that's what the funds are being used for as part of that grant.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2016-32.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Let's vote. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Next one fold was item B, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, item D, yes.
D, which is your flood recovery coordination and right-of-way acquisition.
So I guess I just have a few, actually quite a few questions on this. If we start with the diversion structure, I get that. Scroll down to the Colorado Avenue section. We're selling property at $18,193 per acre. It seems really low.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, and Nick Wolfram, Director of Engineering Services with the city of Longmont Public Works Natural Resources Department. That figure that we're using on Colorado Avenue reflects the same manner in which we've transferred ownership of that larger piece of ground, which is the larger Dickens Farm Park area. That was originally purchased by the sewer fund, and it was transferred to the open space fund. Portions of it were transferred to the open space fund, and portions of it were transferred to the street fund. And what we did always through that was we utilized, that cost inflated 3% per year. In this case, we have kind of a unique situation that Colorado Avenue right-of-way, and there was a lot of discussion between the city attorney's office, planning, and Public Works Natural Resources staff, because normally when you would vacate right-of-way, the right-of-way goes to the adjacent property owner at no cost. And what we're doing here is that's Colorado Avenue that we have no intention of using. We've already transferred a portion of that to the Kanakes previously. But in this particular case, rather than vacating it and having it go to them, it was felt that it was going to come back to the larger Dickens Farm parcel owned by the city, because that's the parcel that it was dedicated from. So what we staff chose to use on that was the same process that we had used previously, is the cost that we had purchased that land for inflated 3% per year.
So what's fair market value for that?
We did not have an appraisal done on that piece of ground.
Okay. Why wouldn't we get fair market value for it?
Normally, when we, like I said, normally when we vacate right-of-way, we, it is just simply vacated as land that goes back to the adjacent property. So that was, that was part of the negotiations of the overall project, and the many issues that were going on between the city and Kanakes, and staff felt that was the fairest way to approach it.
Council and Councilmember Moore, the, I think one of the best ways to determine fair market value is what the original sale price of the property was. We bought the property in the early 2000s for about $11,000 an acre. So I believe we're using a reasonable escalation. One could argue that during the downturn of the economy, there may not have been an escalation of the property, but we are doing the exact same process that we use to treat ourselves, if you will. So when the city decided to sell a portion of that property to the street fund, we did the exact same process. And we also think it's appropriate to deal with neighbors in the same way as we treated ourselves. And again, I do think a fair market value can be derived from the original purchase and escalating that forward. So that's how we've calculated it. I think it's also very difficult to put a price on right-of-way in any sort of appraisal process, because it's typically, you know, used for public right-of-way purposes. So it's sometimes difficult to tie a value to that like you would say a residential lot or a commercial lot on Main Street. I think they're different processes.
Also, why are we leasing open space?
Again, Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Moore, that property's been managed by them for a number of years. What we're doing is sort of cleaning up... What we're doing is sort of cleaning up the boundary between the Canakes and the city. And so it's, if you're familiar with the property out there, the area that we are leasing back to them is a corral that they've had horses in. And so again, we're trying to straighten out the property boundaries between our two properties, and we're doing it in a way that is consistent with how we lease other open space properties for agricultural purposes. So we leased the Herner Farm, we leased the Dwork Farm, we leased the Hartman Farm, all for agriculture, and they are using it for agricultural purposes. So again, it's consistent with how we lease other open space property.
And then the rent for the term of the lease says is $5,000. Is that for all 10 years, or is that $5,000 a year?
Councilmember Moore, it's $500 a year. It's a fairly small portion, so that $5,000 does represent prepayment or advance payment, if you will, for the entire 10 years.
We're also building a sewer line and paying for the cost of the sewer line, and they will maintain it in the future.
And on that issue, trunk line three, which used to cross the St. Vrain River under Main Street, was destroyed in the flood. That was the main line that their barn, Event Center, was tied to. We decided, we, the city, decided to abandon trunk three and to avoid another crossing of the river. So we, we took trunk three and redirected it to interceptor F on the south side of the river further east. So we had, we had an obligation to continue to provide service to this customer, and so what we did is we paid the cost to rebuild their service line to the north, to the existing sewer, to the north of their property. And they will be responsible for the maintenance of their service line, just like the rest of us are.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
So I would move 2016-36.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. There was two ordinances to that, so I move ordinance 2016-37.
Second.
Okay. Good catch. Hey, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is item E, I believe. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that is the airport ordinances, and David Slater will make a short presentation on this.
Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmembers. For the record, I'm David Slater, the Airport Manager. Before you, there are three different code amendments that we're requesting from three sections of the municipal code. Two of those are related to one another. The first one is 2.94040, which pertains to the powers and duties of the Airport Advisory Board. Within all of these requested amendments, it's primarily to streamline the process and bring our practices and processes up with the current industry standards. The first change that we're requesting is, originally in this section, there was not really any specificity with the required recommendation to council concerning leases. As you're aware, we have several leases that are standard and do not deviate from the master lease agreement. Within those changes, it also still has any discussion pertaining to the master lease agreement going to the Airport Advisory Board, or any leases that would be substantially different from the master lease agreement. Would still go to the Advisory Board prior to coming to council. Otherwise, just the standard leases that do not deviate from that would come directly to council. This will streamline the process. Within that same requested changes, we left the Airport Advisory Board still involved in the development of long-range goals. However, for the annual goals, that is more of a staff function, and so we took the word "develop" out, and we just left them in the process for review and recommendation after that development is done by staff. And then finally, there were two sentences within the code that were nearly identical, so we just combined those into one. With regards to the next code, Longmont Municipal Code 4.64030, lease rates, historically, the amount, the actual amount of lease rates was, the dollar amount was shown in code, and then you had kind of had to track the Consumer Price Index as it fluctuates over time. The industry standard is typically that airports have a schedule of rates and fees, and so we're trying to establish that as a normal process. And this basically just takes the existing dollar amounts and puts into the schedule of rates and charges maintained at the airport. The council will still have final approval of lease rates. This just consolidates everything into a streamlined process and brings us up to the industry The other thing that was added to that section was that prior to any recommended changes to those lease rates, we would notify the tenant base at least 30 days in advance of the airport tenants. And we provided for a way to do that in an official notification process. That was the recommended change by the Advisory Board, and that has been incorporated into the recommended changes. And then it specifies the establishment of the fuel flowage fee by council, and that would also be included in the airport schedule of rates and charges. And then finally, 4.64040 is very similar. It basically does the same thing. So what that section deals with is the public use permit fees. And so it basically uses the same language that puts those fees and permit fees into the airport schedule of rates and charges, because it is a fee derived at the airport for use of that property. And so we're just consolidating into one document and then tying that together with the ordinance and your ability to set the fees through resolution. Within this, this also gives the definitive authority to the Airport Manager to designate parachute landing areas or drop zones in the public use areas, and creates exceptions to allow to negotiate for civic organizations that may be promoting aviation as part of the event while at the airport, for those fees to be negotiated either down or waived completely. Sometimes you'll have events like Boy Scouts out there that are working towards an aviation badge or something like that. And of course, that wouldn't be done by me. That would still have to go through the approval of the city manager in order to negotiate a separate agreement for that particular event.
Okay.
And then also in the packet, you were presented the actual schedule of rates and charges, because that's done through, recommended to be done through resolution. That would not be considered part of the first reading, but it is a presentation to give you a view of what's to come on May the 24th. That's all I had. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't have any questions. I just wanted disclosure. So technically, I am a sole member LLC that owns a hangar at the airport, and so I am technically a tenant of the airport. I'm not going to recuse myself, because I feel that I can be objective, and I kind of look at it as, we all own houses, and we vote on water rate increases, and we vote on trash and composting, and we have a, we have an interest in Longmont. And so the airport hangar that I purchased last month is yet another interest that I have in Longmont. And so I'm going to vote for this, jack up the rates, whatever we need to do, but the, I just wanted to disclose. And we're not jacking up the rates. I was being a little facetious, tongue-in-cheek.
Councilmember Christensen?
David, I have a question, two questions on the last page. First of all, what is an SASO? I think it has to do with special operator, but I, could you explain that for everybody else? And what is your justification for charging what is being called a through-the-fence operator, who is a licensed mechanic who has a small business, an additional rate to come on the airport property?
Mayor Coombs?
Who's being asked to come on the airport property by somebody who has a plane that he wants to have fixed?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, thank you for the questions. To answer your first question, SASO stands for Specialized Aviation Service Operator, and what they are is a limited or single-service type operator, as opposed to the fixed-based operator that sells fuel. So they may specialize in one particular commercial service for aeronautical, such as a aircraft mechanic or a flight instructor. They can offer more than one service, but they wouldn't be considered a full fixed-based That's what a specialized aviation service operator is.
Why would both of these be charged more? In addition to, I mean, yeah, why would both of those be charged more?
On the schedule rates and charges, and of course, there is an asterisk by the S for non-standard SASO, and of course, that wouldn't be charged unless and until the commercial minimum standards are passed and approved. And then it would only be charged if they did not meet the standard, the bare minimum standard.
Oh.
Through-the-fence operator, while it is addressed in the proposed minimum standards, it's also recognized, and the FAA's viewpoint on a through-the-fence, or a commercial through-the-fence operator, is that they are coming on the airport to provide a service that crosses the airport boundary, where the existing businesses have invested in lease payments, insurance requirements, and things like that, and don't have the same overhead as people that have chosen to make that airport their home for their business. So that is why they call it a through-the-fence operators, because they come across the airport border through the fence to operate. Now, there are several different types of through-the-fence operators that range from residential through-the-fence that kind of has a different connotation, but that's not exactly what we're talking about. For the through-the-fence operator, the FAA has a viewpoint that if the airports do not even have to allow that to take place at the airport, if the airport so chooses not to have it. However, because there are certain services that can be provided by through-the-fence operators that are not currently provided on the airport, we decided that it would be best to allow that practice. The FAA tells us that if you allow that practice, because they are coming through and able to provide that service, if you don't charge them, then you're potentially in violation of the Grant Assurance 22, which is economic nondiscrimination. You can't unjustly discriminate by requiring these people to have invested in the airport to be allowed to operate on the airport, and then this person come in and just work for free. So there has to be an equitable charge for the people coming through the fence as there is for the existing businesses on the airport. With that being said, there's also a Grant Assurance 24, which goes to the fee and rental structure, that says you also have to be as self-sustaining as possible, and by not charging that fee for someone coming on and providing the services when other people are required to either have a lease or meet some kind of standard, and it takes money invested in the airport to do that, then you're allowing somebody else to not do it and not pay for it if you don't have that agreement or charge associated with it. So what that does is allow us to meet two grant assurance requirements.
Okay. Well, but of course, these guys do, are licensed, so they pay licenses fees, and they have the same, the same costs as somebody out at the airport. They're just not paying them to the airport.
I don't think that's, they don't have the cost of paying the lease rates to the airport, which actually goes to, so the revenue that we derive at the airport actually goes to the operation, the cost associated with the operation and maintenance of the airport. And so if you're located there, you do have that expense, but if you're not located there, you do not have that expense. So while they have the same license piece, they don't have the same cost associated with actually being on the airport.
No, but they do have to pay a lease to someone. I mean, they all have shops.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, just to clarify, not necessarily, there are people who may operate out of the back of their pickup truck. For instance, there is one person who actually flies their airplanes to different locations and conducts an avionics check, a transponder check for the aircraft as part of their business, but they just go from location to location performing that service, which, that's fine, but they are not putting money into paying for the infrastructure at our airport.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you. David, am I missing something here? I don't see anything for a jump fee. I see drop zone, but for an individual jump fee, for every time somebody jumps, we're going to look at that? Do we have that in here?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, no, ma'am, that is not a current rate that we charge at this time. So the money that we collect and charge for the area used as a drop zone is actually under the second section of the public use permit fees. So basically, we just took that permit fee and moved from ordinance into the schedule of rates and charges.
So to answer your question, that is something that we're working on that's being reviewed by John Putnam.
So we're still working on that? You're not just ignoring that we're, okay.
No, this is a piece of it, but that's a piece because of the technical issues associated with it that we're working directly with Mr. Putnam.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move ordinance 2016-38.
Second.
All right, that's been moved in second. Let's vote on ordinance 2016-38.
Can we do both of them at once? Since it's a consent agenda?
Well, I guess we could have, but, okay, that passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move ordinance 2016-39.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero. The last one was J.
Yes, and that is the Economic Development Agreement with the City of Longmont and Chromadex. And Jessica's here to make this presentation.
Thank you for your time this evening. I am here to present some information in regards to the request for an economic development agreement between the City of Longmont and Chromadex, Inc. Chromadex is a company that the Longmont Economic Development Partnership has been working with for the purposes of attracting them to expand their operations into the City of Longmont. So a little bit of background on Chromadex, Inc., they're a company that was established in 1999 with headquarters in Irvine, California, as well as locations in both Boulder, Colorado, and Rockville, Maryland, with a total of 80 employees at all three locations, 40 of those located here in Colorado at their Boulder facility. It is, Chromadex, Inc. is an innovative natural products company that develops and markets phytochemical botanical reference standards and materials. Basically, they're developing, doing R and D and development of ingredients for natural products, from food products to vitamins and other things that you would probably find at Whole Foods or natural grocers. The project that they're proposing to do, the initial project that they're proposing to do here in Longmont, which is what we're asking that you approve an economic development agreement for, is a 10,000-square-foot chemistry and pilot plant facility, which would be phase one of what they're calling a long-term investment strategy to grow technology. phase one of what they're calling a long-term investment strategy to grow technology and process development capability within wherever they establish this facility. The new facility is intended to complement the existing chemistry and analytical testing facility service here in Boulder, so not take from or relocate, but to complement what they're already doing here in the region. The proposed investment for this first-phase project is $600,000 to $700,000 in tenant improvements in the facility that they've identified on Fordham Street, as well as an investment of about $450,000 in new equipment that will go into the facility, and that's just in the first two years of operation. The employment and wages that they're proposing to add to the community would be five to six employees within the first year and 10 by the third year. They anticipate that they'll have 12 by year five, and if successful, if this new pilot plant project is successful, they anticipate that they would create 30 to 40 new jobs in years five to seven of being established within the community. And with all of those jobs, the average annual wage is anticipated to be about $70,000, and the requirement for an economic development agreement with the city is 105% of county average wage, which is about $60,000, so they far exceed the requirement or the criteria for wages being paid in order to qualify for an economic development agreement. So the incentive for economic development agreement request before you today is to provide assistance to help offset the cost of build-out at the new facility. This was a competitive project. The company did consider sites throughout Boulder County. It is an increase in primary jobs with what we're considering significant future expansion potential. This is a company that is within one of our advanced Longmont-targeted industries of bioscience, and as I mentioned, exceeds the 105% Boulder County average wage requirement of just around $60,000 per year. And so the incentive being requested is a rebate of fees related to the build-out of the facility. So the table I have here for you are the estimated fees that will be associated with the build-out, as well as what the proposed rebate would be. So proposed rebate of the entirety of the building permit fee, as well as the commercial plan review fee, these are our standard fees that we rebate as part of these economic development agreements, as well as the city portion of sales tax related to materials used in the build-out of the facility. And so we're estimating the total incentive would be $14,937.41. The actual amount would be based on the actual expenditure in the build-out of the facility. However, you'll note in the agreement that was provided to you that we have capped that at, or I shouldn't say we, that city staff has capped that at $16,000, so the maximum total incentive would be $16,000 for this project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Jessica. This is interesting. It doesn't seem like it's very many employees for the amount of money that we are rebating to you. I agreed when we talked to do the two-year, but I'm really kind of confused as to why we're only going to get very few employees with a huge rebate, especially on the sales tax, which we absolutely need. What's the justification for this?
The reason that we are suggesting approval of an economic development agreement with this company is because of the potential future growth related to establishment of this initial investment into the community with this project. And so we're looking more at investing now in the future return of the potential of 30 to 40 and even more jobs in out-years. And those jobs aren't, wouldn't be, or that future growth would not be incentivized, it's just to get this initial investment here within Longmont to create the opportunity for that future potential growth. I'm often asked, I've been doing economic development in the region for a long time, I'm often asked since I've been here in Longmont, where are our big deals? Where are our big announcements, like what we see happening in Denver and other parts of the region? And I can tell you from my experience that the strategy of the state of Colorado as a whole, as well as many other communities and the metro Denver region, has been to identify opportunities to get companies to make initial investments, initial small investments in the state, in a community, in the region, and those initial investments are what ultimately result in those big announcements that you see on television or in headlines of hundreds and thousands of jobs being created. And so that's a strategy that's been effective for the state as a whole, and we think a strategy that can be effective within the City of Longmont. And so to incentivize early on a very small investment in the community for the potential future growth that's been committed to by a company like Chromadex, we think is an effective use of incentive dollars.
Okay. You had started out your presentation saying that they have commercial places in other cities, but you're calling this a pilot program. So why is this a pilot program when this business is already established and they are just starting very small and can't start out with 30 employees here?
It's a pilot for the company, for R&amp;D into new products. I don't claim to know the science of what they're doing, but it is R&amp;D into new products, new processes for the company. So it's probably the most simple way to think of it as a new division of a larger company that has potential for future growth in and of itself, above and beyond the potential future growth. And in conversation with the company, that any future consolidation or growth related to that and potentially some other portions of the company would happen at wherever they make this initial investment in the region.
How is the parent company doing? Because we've had companies start here and then suddenly they're in bankruptcy. So how is the parent company doing? Are they solid?
They are solid, and they are a publicly traded company on the NASDAQ. I don't have the specific numbers with me, but they are solid and they are a growing company.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Christensen?
I do like the idea that they're going to settle at Fordham, which is, I think, underutilized, and it's wonderful to see that they're willing to put 4,000 to 6,000, 100,000 into that. That's, and I agree with you that if you start off slow and then they invest, they will stay because they've made an investment. And I, you know, this is an amount that we can certainly afford to get a company eventually. I am also a little troubled by so few employees, but sometimes to set something up, particularly a research department or a research development company, requires a certain high-level people to do a lot of work for a few years until you get going. The sales tax is, that's a one-time rebate. After that, it'll be off. Okay, right?
Yes, it is a one-time rebate related to the sales and use tax paid on materials used in the build-out of the facility.
Okay.
And so it's not an ongoing rebate of sales tax generated by the company, or that would be paid by the company for future purchases.
Okay, thank you.
I think the important thing is, if they didn't come here, we would never have gotten that sales and use tax anyway, so it's not real money. It's not like we're writing them a check for $16,000. We're just rebating the use tax that they're buying, you know, they're going down and they're building the stuff and they're buying equipment, and we're rebating that use tax back to them. You know, I think, you know, if this was, if they were doing the same thing over two years, we wouldn't even be having this discussion, but I think the upside potential of a company like this that it's doing research, you know, and 10 good-paying jobs, you know, for $16,000, you know, sometimes you have to invest money to make money, and I think it's a smart investment, and I'm fully on board and will support this. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And as was just clarified by Jessica, we're talking $7,000 in sales tax, a one-time building permit fee of roughly $4,800, and a commercial plan review fee of $20, of $3,100, all one-time fees. Just do the math real fast, and you know, 10 jobs sets $70,000, $700,000 now, if we get all 10 and all 10 residents stay here, it's money that's coming into our economy. People need services. They pay tax, they buy houses, hopefully, and then they'll pay property taxes and all sorts of things. So in the end, I think roughly $15,000 to $16,000 incentive rebate is reasonable.
And if I may, I would like to address the mayor's point in regards to if these jobs were being created in two years as opposed to in year three, that we wouldn't even be having this conversation, and take the opportunity to remind council that the incentive criteria that you've approved require that a company create 10 net new jobs in the community within two years in order to qualify. And for any incentive rebate under $75,000 that meets those criteria, those are allowed to be approved administratively. The reason that we're having to come to you this evening is because that 10th job will be created in year three as opposed to year two, so it's slightly outside of the standard criteria for an incentive rebate.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think this is an excellent incentive, and I would move that we approve the agreement as written.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Thank you, Jessica. Okay, you know, maybe it's time to take a five-minute break before we do the general business section. All right.
Thank you.[74.11]
That some combination of additional public safety staff. Were added in a couple instances, again, in Adams County and Lakewood. Additional staffing was not. Wearing taxes, they have sales tax, use tax, and excise tax in varying amounts depending on the type of business. If it's a retail facility, if it's a manufacturing facility, if it's a testing facility. And so they've passed additional taxes with that. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Sean to talk a little bit about the recommendations. And then we'll talk a little bit about revenue and take your questions.
Actually, before we do that, are there any questions about what other cities are doing?
I have one question. Are any cities allowing research facilities? People that are just doing research on some of the, you know, potential medical benefits or I know cannabis has 400 different cannabinoids to it and people are just now beginning to understand what some of them do or don't do. I was just wondering if that's being allowed by any cities that you know of.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I believe that would fall under the testing kind of label that we've included here. We do know that that's something cities are permitting. That's not something that we specifically researched or found in the ordinances and regulations. But we're under the impression that that's falling under the testing, so I would say yes.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Aaron, of the revenue collected, how much of that from either city or county is going into prevention of all those that are there?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Santos, we do have some slides here after our recommendation that talk a little bit more about the revenue and some of the data that we were able to obtain from the state. I don't know that we've collected that at the specific jurisdictional level. Some of that data is not necessarily readily available. We might need to dig a little bit deeper, so I don't know that we have that level of specificity. That may be something that we could potentially try and do some additional research. And that would probably require outreach to those specific jurisdictions.
Well, it'd also be good to understand in those either cities or counties, whether the requests for funds of that nature regarding prevention have gone up and by how much. Thanks.
Councilmember Christensen.
Just for curiosity, of others towns in our county, I know that Lyons does allow retail sales. What about Lafayette and Lewisville?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, I believe that Lafayette does allow. We did not look at that as a benchmark city. I'm not sure on Lewisville, but we could certainly take a look at other, as you mentioned Lyons certainly does. We could take a look specifically at how other cities in Boulder County are approaching it. But I'm relatively certain that Lafayette does have some provisions for marijuana. And Lewisville does as well. Captain Goldman just informed me. Thank you.
And Mayor Council just would also add that that is, again, additional research that we can bring back to you. We wanted to look at a kind of a sampling of cities, particularly those cities who have been in the business, if you will, the longest and have the most kind of sophisticated systems in place.
Councilmember Peck, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just for clarification, are the testing facilities also, are they growing their own marijuana to test? Are these grow facilities as well? Or are the cultivation facilities grow facilities?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Peck, we didn't get into the level of detail with each jurisdiction on what is allowed at each facility. So it's our understanding that the production and cultivation facilities are those that are providing the supply for the centers and the dispensaries. The testing facilities would be just that testing product. I'm not sure if their growing product also tests, but that would be something we could look into.
Okay, thank.
Can growers of one community provide product to another community? Yeah, cultivation, yeah.
Council and Mayor Coombs, Captain Michelle Goldman-Fire. I think what you're asking is if you could grow it in one place and then take it to another. Is that correct? So if you have a cultivation facility?
Basically, let's say one community's got an excess amount of cultivation, you know, more than what their limited number of stores can. But another community doesn't allow cultivation but wants retail stores.
That is done through what they call a courier. And that has to be licensed and permitted also, is my understanding. So the big grow, commercial grow facilities are allowed to sell to the retail stores. And it's only able to be taken from the cultivation to the store by licensed and permitted carrier or courier. And I think they're working on changing some of that, but that's the way it works right now.
Okay, thank you. Next. Councilmember Finley, did you have a question?
I did. And I'll wait for most of my questions till you're done. But do we know how many Longmont residents have a medical marijuana card? And is that easy to find out? Can we find that out?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Finley, we do not have that number, but I believe those folks do have to have that registration. And so we can get that number. We'll make a note of that for future, if we have future presentations. So our next slides concern specifics.
Councilmember Christensen.
I'm sorry, this may not be the right time to ask this, but I'm curious before we start if we have any statistics on whether from the police force or anyone else on whether the use of marijuana has gone up since, other than the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Other, the use of, whether there's been an increase in the use of marijuana among people under 18?
Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, Sean Harper, Police Department. I don't have the data, the hard numbers, but anecdotally I can say yes, the use has increased.
A lot or?
Again, anecdotally, yes, a lot.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And Mayor, Members of Council, we will have opportunities at the end for specific data requests that we can bring back data points. Right now, what we'd like to do is just go through staff recommendations. Again, I give this important caveat, assuming you would like to proceed with the allowing of sales. These are the recommendations that staff would make with regard to that. So the first recommendation we have is to limit to recreational only. There are several reasons that staff is recommending recreational only as opposed to medical or medical and recreational. First of all, the state statutes for medical marijuana are much more limited. Even though that's an older policy, there was a lot more work done at the state level on the recreational side than was done on the medical side. So those statutes are more, I would say, developing than are the recreational regulations. So they're more, in some cases, confusing, more difficult to administer. Also, benchmark cities who are doing medical have strongly urged cities who have not yet done medical or recreational to only do recreational for some of the reasons that are noted above as well as below. And noting again that those regulations are onerous to administer. And the third, and we think one of the most compelling reasons to only look at recreational, is the fact that with medical allowed sales in your community, that does open the sales up to 18-year-olds. As you know, 18-year-olds can get a medical card and partake. We have, again, anecdotally heard from other communities that the transfer of that from 18-year-olds is higher than it is from, say, a 21-year-old, which is the age for, on the medical, excuse me, on the recreational side. So for those reasons, we are recommending that should you choose to proceed, that we really limit that research and analysis to recreational. Second, we would recommend that we enact no regulations regarding home grows. Again, a few reasons for that. First of all, and most importantly, this is already regulated, rather, by state statute. So the state has regulations with regard to that. They have responsibility with regard to that. Also, we have found that particularly in Boulder County, that it is a low priority prosecution at the county level. And additionally, it would require staffing levels beyond what the staffing levels that we'll show you in the rest of the presentation that we think would be pretty significant because that practice is so much more widespread than the ability to open, for instance, a storefront. Third, we, staff is recommending that we allow for testing and manufacturing. That's for a couple of reasons. First of all, as you know, the city has received, rather, inquiries from companies who are wishing to look at Longmont for a location for testing and development. Some of those companies could produce additional employment, could produce additional revenues. And of course, that would allow for the infusion and as well as the edibles should you direct staff to allow the testing and manufacturing. The next item that we want to look at, first of all, let's stop and just see if there are any questions with regard to those recommendations that we just showed you.
I guess I personally agree with those recommendations.
If you have any questions regarding our specific recommendations. Because the rest of our presentation is really predicated on these recommendations, you taking these recommendations and directing staff with regard to this. So again, we can do research on all sorts of other kind of options such as medical, et cetera. But the recommendations that we're showing you regarding staffing, regarding revenues, are all based on this recommendation to only do recreational and to allow and to not do regulate home grows and to allow for testing and manufacturing. Okay, well, let's look at staff and associated costs with regard.
Councilmember Christensen. You know, I'd be more efficient if we just let them present and then ask all the questions at the end.
I know, but because he added that caveat, I would like to say, I really, I realize that it would be a pain to deal with the medical. But that is, to me, the most useful thing. And I just feel like it's sort of a moral issue. If we're going to do this at all, there should be something useful to this. And it really is, I just think we should certainly allow medical.
Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, that's the kind of feedback that we definitely are wanting to hear. And certainly, if you all direct us towards the end of the presentation to proceed, that's something that if a consensus of council wishes to proceed, then we definitely would be willing to enable. I just wanted to put the caveat that the rest of the presentation will not include staffing levels or other revenue generation or other costs associated based on medical. We're only presenting based on recreational.
Well, you know, I guess I disagree with Councilmember Christensen. I mean, medical, basically, there's people that can go to recreational shops and buy virtually medical products like CBD ointments and painkillers and things like that that, you know, it's really the same product that. And, you know, and it really does bother me that an 18-year-old kid can, you know, there was one doctor that was giving out 95% of the prescription cards. And it's a real problem when 18-year-olds have access to easy cannabis because they're going to give it to their friends. And that's what always bothered me about the medical marijuana, that it's, I just thought it was too out of control. That's my opinion. Okay, go ahead.
And Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christensen, I also was just reminded by staff, other members of the task force, that having recreational only does not prohibit folks that are using it for medical uses to obtain that, except for from the ages of 18 to 20. So anyone 21 and older can still use for medical purposes, but they would just buy in Longmont through the recreational outlets. I'm not sure about that. So moving on to staffing and associated costs, again, looking at 10 or fewer establishments, we are recommending a limit on the number of establishments should you choose to proceed somewhere between perhaps four and 10. So what you're going to see tonight are our staffing recommendations for 10 or fewer establishments. We don't see really a lot of difference in the staffing levels in regulating four versus regulating 10. So with that in mind, we are looking at, similar to what other communities and counties have done, half of a police officer's time, so the salary that's shown here as well as benefits for a halftime entry-level police officer would do the following, assist state inspectors, ensure security systems which are required and we would be required to inspect, ensure that those are in place. We also anticipate some increased call for service related to establishments. Police would also help with plan review and SEP TED, which is looking at environmental design and the design of the facility and the site to make sure that it prevents by its design criminal behavior. Next, we would recommend a halftime fire inspector at $39,720. That would be for inspection of the cultivation facilities, processing and retail sales, as well as those facilities associated with that, as well as the plan review and those inspections. So primarily inspection and plan review. And next, we would recommend a halftime licensing clerk. So the licensing clerk, we have not gone so far as to think of which department necessarily that would, particular function would be, take place in. But that individual would be issuing the licenses. They would also be coordinating between departments because just like with building a building or opening an alcohol sales facility, you have to have a lot of coordination between the departments, between fire, between police, all sorts of different departments that are looking at those things. They would also be ensuring that state and local compliance are taking place and a lot of reporting that the state requires with regard to marijuana sales.
So this halftime fire inspector to inspect cultivation, I thought your primary recommendations was to allow for testing and manufacturing your product, but not cultivation. So if we didn't do the grow shops here, would we still need a halftime fire inspector?
Councilmember Mayor Coombs, Captain Michelle Goldman-Fire. I think what we had included was all of those, was commercial grow facilities, testing facilities, and recreational retail.
So yes, so even if you pull, I would say even if you pull the cultivation piece out, you're still going to need the halftime. Because when you look at the work that we're just dealing with today because of just the development activity, you couldn't assume that function and not.
There are taxes generated with the grow facilities as well.
You couldn't assume the function and not increase staff levels. We just couldn't absorb it within the existing staffing.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I wanted to point out, Sean, this is the entry-level police number. So the other thing I wanted to point out on this is when we looked at the police number, so again, it's an increase of half of a police officer. So that's not something that could be absorbed within the police budget or the existing number of officers. We use the entry-level number for a police officer just because that's going to be the, when you create a position, there's a high probability that it could be a new officer that you actually fund. But the reality is, once we see it, that number has the potential to get a little bit higher because we may need to use a more tenured officer. So this is a number to start out with, but there is the potential for it to jump because we may need a four-year officer, for example.
That's a great point, Mayor Council, that Chief Butler actually noted that probably he would want a more tenured officer working in that. But what we would probably do is move someone part-time into these functions and then backfill them with the entry-level position. But as the city manager and the chief of public safety noted, that number could increase as time goes on.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The budget impact, would, are you anticipating that whatever taxes or could be implemented, should we go down this path, is that where these items are going to be paid for? Not so much out of general fund?
Mayor, Councilmember Santos, that's exactly right. And we do have revenue projections and then we'll show you the cost difference towards the end.
And to answer that question, you know, I think we would need a revenue source to support these additional positions. When you look at some of the other needs as we come into budget, we're going to really need to look at the general fund to come in and fill those gaps.
So Mayor Council, just want to, before we bring up Jim Golden to go over those revenue projections, want to give some caveats, some explanations with regard to our revenue projections. First of all, we would just reemphasize that projections are very difficult. They are not exact. We have two methods that we're going to show you today. The first is average revenue per facility in our benchmark cities. And the other is average sales per capita. So each citizen, what they are spending per capita based on the gross sales within those communities. So those are the two kind of methodologies that we have chosen to show you in order to project revenue. We have some limitations with regard to our benchmark communities that we looked at because with, in particular, Boulder and Fort Collins, which we think are the most comparable. Of course, they are college towns, so we want to just recognize that. And also, we know that those communities both draw customers from outside of their communities, such as Longmont citizens. But we do think that there would be potential to see folks from our surrounding communities who would also shift their buying patterns and potentially come to Longmont. So that might be mitigated somewhat by our own surrounding smaller communities. Other limitations to our revenue projections are the fact that they do not include licensing fees, the use taxes on manufacturers should you choose to proceed with allowing processing facilities, fines, things like that. None of those are included in these revenue projections. There could also be possible increases in employment associated. Obviously, if you're opening even four new businesses, you're going to have employment that's associated with that. So assuming that, you know, folks would get jobs here that are not here or unemployed folks that are here, then you would have the potential to have the multiplier effect that you are probably all aware of in economic development. When you get a new job in town, they are spending additional money within the community that's then cycles throughout the community. So none of our revenue projections look at that. And then we also want to just point out the obvious that our revenue calculations are, could be affected by the fact that we do have two businesses on our city limit border. So there are options with regard to that. Both of those, one of those facilities is an enclave, therefore annexation could be possible. The other may soon be an enclave based on some future annexations. So annexations of those facilities are possible. We are, our projections are based on four additional facilities, however. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jim Golden.
Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. Not a member of task force, I'm an honorary member tonight, so. But I did kind of, Sean did let me review this information before it was put into the presentation form. So I think I kind of drove the idea of adding an alternate way to projecting the revenue. So he did ask me to explain the differences here. A couple of other limitations, I think. My staff did work to pull some of this information together. Our sales tax administrator was on the task force. And a lot of this data, as you know, sales tax data is confidential. So we can't necessarily get from other cities the type of information that would get us down to the level of detail. That might be very helpful in this case. So what we do have here, we have a limited number of entities that are shown here. And on top of that, we also do not know the number of businesses in the counties. The state collects for the counties. So all that we could get from the state was the amount of the sales tax revenue. And I do believe that this includes medical marijuana because we're unable to get that split out. So this is all types of marijuana sales. So we also didn't have the number of businesses for either county. But actually, I think the number of businesses for Fort Collins and Boulder are information that we gathered from other means and beyond, from the entities themselves. But the revenue is correct, the rates are correct. And so we use those to extrapolate some estimates. So on this first presentation was the original methodology that was utilized, which was really to take for using the two cities that are shown here, using their average revenue per business, that we normalized that revenue to the city's sales tax rate of 3.275 because you can see that Boulder's sales tax rate for marijuana is quite different than the Fort Collins rate. So what our $33,000 average revenue per business is at the Longmont sales tax rate based on the average sales for these 27 facilities in these two entities. There, the assumption was made, they used four as a potential amount of businesses the task force did. So based on four potential businesses in Longmont, they estimated $132,000 of revenue from this source. Now, on top of that, they take it further, they considered multiplying that by the number of businesses. So I think this is where I kind of complicated things probably, whoops.
So I think one of the things, so one of the original slides had a look at four locations and then another look at 10 locations. And there was just, you take the average, you multiply it by the number of locations. And we were a little concerned that that's really not a good look because there's one thing we don't know in any of this and that's the market demand. And is there a true correlation to, just isn't that much per location? And so that's why part of this is really leaving it at the four because there's no way to assess really what that market demand is.
Yeah, you don't know where market saturation is.
Right, the saturation is a complete unknown.
So what we tried to do in this second projection is based on a revenue per capita. So we used the same entities and the same data that we had and backed into the taxable sales for each of the jurisdictions. And so in turn, using the population for each of them. And we did back out the city of Boulder from Boulder County itself so that we weren't double counting them in there. So from there, we got a per capita sales for each of these four entities. And that averaged out to $102.98 sales per capita. So we use that as an estimate here for Longmont, using our current population, 92,852, to come up with a sales tax revenue estimate of $313,000. So this is trying to at least tie it to the population and the potential demand based on per capita. So from there, those two amounts are shown here. The first line is, first row is based again on the first assumption of the per facility. We have a staffing cost that Sean went through. And again, based on four facilities, we have $132,000 of revenue. And so an annual net fiscal impact of $17,000. And under the per capita methodology, again, the same comparison, but instead an annual net fiscal impact of $206,000 almost. So taking that a little bit further, as you know, our sales tax is broken out amongst five different funds. And so looking at the individual impact per fund, because the expenses that you were looking at for those three positions, we allocated those mostly to the general fund. We do have a breakdown of a portion of the public safety positions. I think it was 1/6th or 1/7th as the revenue breakout is between the general fund and the public safety fund sales tax. We have allocated a portion of it to the public safety fund. So you can see the cost allocation in the first row, the revenue based on the breakdown of this city's 3.275% sales tax. So getting under the first assumption of the revenue per facility, the general fund actually has greater cost than revenues here at an impact of $33,342 of cost in excess of revenue. There's three funds here that have no expenses involved. They'll, as the sales tax is broken out in the earmark to those funds, they'll all have a net increase in revenue. And then, and really, it's just coincidentally that this revenue and expense is pretty close to zeroing out here on the public safety fund. So this last slide is taking a look at the revenue per capita method since it's a greater amount of sales tax at $313,000 here. You can see this, that changes things entirely for each of these funds. And the general fund is in the black in this scenario by $60,000. And then each of the other funds as well has a net surplus of revenue. Again, these are purely projections. I would think if we went into the budget process, we'd probably only want to budget the amount of revenue that it takes to cover the expenses that we pose for the first year. And then after we see how the actual revenues come in, kind of like we do as we await, you know, the revenues coming in at the Village of the Peaks, we will then have a better idea of how to budget in subsequent years.
So Mayor Coombs, if I could just add one item. If you all were as initially confused by the breakdown, if you could go back one slide, breakdown of those funds as our task force initially was, I do want to just make sure that everyone understands that those taxes, as far as, that our sales tax is allocated to these different funds. And so this is the net impact on each one.
So why did Boulder choose to increase their sales tax just on Mayor? So why did Boulder choose to increase their sales tax, just on marijuana, there's such a high number, because their city sales tax isn't anywhere near that?
I'm only an honorary member of the task force. I would imagine it was in order to generate more funds. It might have been because they thought their costs would have been pretty significant, and they wanted to make sure that they would have the revenue to cover it, so.
And I think there's two pieces in there. So if you look at their staffing numbers, they had significantly more staff than any other community.
Okay.
And Mayor, just to point out that that required a vote of the public to do that, that tax rate in place.
So I think one piece, they had more staff members, so that obviously drives a higher cost. As you see in this presentation, one of the things that the task force did talk about was really capping the number of establishments. I think one of the things that you have to look at is that if you let, if you don't have some certainty in this, you really can't start really grabbing a hold of your expenses. And so that may have been another reason why they did this, because there's some uncertainty. If you don't limit it, then you don't know how many stores you're going to have, and what that's going to entail in terms of staff costs. That's just how I would look at it here.
And Mayor, Council, that is an item that we can get more information on, if you would choose to proceed.
So isn't it almost a given that since the New Sunset Bridge is becoming, you know, not a county bridge, but a city bridge, wouldn't we eventually annex that land over there around that bridge?
So there is an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County, and as part of the partnership on the Sunset Bridge, there, we are, we did agree to annex some areas. I'm going to look to Dale to say, is that one of -- yeah, so is that one of the areas that's to be annexed, the business? No. But it would become an enclave, I mean, it is an enclave, and that is something that council can look at.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, I just want to get my thoughts out there, and then you guys can do what you want. I'm in the minority, I realize that. There's a few times in my life when I'm like, I can't believe this, and this is one of them. You know, you go back, if I were to go back 10 years and say, I would be sitting on a city council, talking about the possibility of legalizing marijuana, I'd be like, you guys are here on drugs, no way. But I, let there be no mistake, of all the people in this room, I have the most to gain financially from allowing recreational pot stores in Longmont. I will make a lot of money. I'm an attorney, I do divorces, criminal law, and alcohol and drugs, including marijuana, are the root of pretty much the majority of my cases. If we allow this in our town, we will see an impact. So the, that's where my, that's my incentive. You know, I have an incentive to bring it in. However, there is some data that we can't ignore. Colorado now ranks number one in the nation for past month marijuana use among people, among children ages 12 to 17. That's a fact. You guys can argue anecdotes, we can argue about, you know, whether it's good or bad. That's not what we're here about tonight. Colorado voted to make it legal. I'm not going to make an argument that we should or shouldn't have it legal. Right now, you can own it, possess it, grow it, you know, that's allowed. The question we're dealing with tonight is, are we going to permit retail or medical stores within Longmont city limits? That ranking, that number one ranking for our youth, 12 to 17, is 74% higher than the national average. You hear a lot of the arguments, I just want to get, I just want to address them, and then I'll shut up. But the, what did Amendment 64 say? Amendment 64, this is what we 50% voted on. Shall there be an amendment to the Colorado Constitution concerning marijuana, and in connection therewith, providing for the regulation of marijuana, permitting a person 21 years of age or older to consume or possess limited amounts of marijuana, providing for the licensing of cultivation facilities, product manufacturing facilities, testing facilities, and retail stores, permitting local governments to regulate or prohibit such facilities? So there was Amendment 64 didn't say, hey, let's just open it up, and anybody who wants to have a pot shop, use pot, whatever, we're going to open it up to the Wild West. That's not what Amendment 64 did. It just, again, as a criminal attorney, we were locking up a lot of people for using pot, and giving them sentences that were completely uncalled for. So Amendment 64 didn't give a free ticket for people just to all of a sudden start using, I mean, using pot, as much as they want, having as much as they want. And it wasn't necessarily a mandate for cities to just start allowing the retail sale. It's still listed, along with meth, along with heroin, along with, there's three others. But basically, it's still classified as a Schedule I drug by the feds. And the reason why, and I hear people always talk about the medical benefits, as an attorney, it's a joke. People who come in with their red cards, they go up to the judge, and they say, well, your honor, I've got a red card. There's not a judge in Colorado, you walk up, and you say, well, I know that I'm on probation, but can I still use my pot? They'll say no. It's just known in my community that it's a joke. There's been, because it's a Class I drug, there has been no studies on the medical benefits of marijuana. And I see that, I mean, I kind of look at it as nutraceuticals, or as Veratrol, or other things that you can purchase, or essential oils, people who claim that there's a health benefit to it, but the FDA doesn't back it. There have been no significant studies that actually come out and say, hey, this is it. And say what you want about the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Study, it's basically saying that our kids are starting to use it more and more, as a result of us legalizing it. And as much as people say that it's not addictive, there are a percent of people who become addictive to pot. It's called dependency. And people who are subjected to pot under the age of 18 are seven times more likely to have dependency on marijuana. And they become incapable of functioning, a lot of times, in society. Is it only 17, 20%? Sure. But those are the people who are my clients. And so, I get ripped. I read the Times Call things, and I know that what I'm saying tonight, recall, recall, Bagley's out of touch, but I'm not going to vote for it. It's bad news. And I also represent pot stores, who are clients. And I have very few of those clients who actually use the product. They sell it. And so, I mean, I just, I just think it's ridiculous that we're having this conversation, and I'll have nothing to do with it. I'm going to vote no on this. You can still smoke it, grow it, own it, you can get it in town at two locations, you can drive to Boulder, you can drive all over. But the idea of opening up pot stores in downtown Longmont is going to change the feel of Longmont, and just further allow our children to have access to it, because someone's going to buy it and give it to them. And the argument about, well, it's not as bad as alcohol, or it's not as bad as, you know, prescription drugs, all true. All that stuff, if I could do away with that, to tell you the truth, I'd probably tell you to limit that, too. So that's kind of my thought, and as I'm sitting here hearing us talk about this, just these are the thoughts that are going through my mind, and I know I'm going to get ripped for it, I know I'm in the minority, and that's just how I feel.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, Councilmember Bagley, you won't be the only one that will get ripped. What I, what, I find it interesting that we've had folks come in over the years, since this first came up. Whether it's fracking, or whether it's marijuana, or whether, whatever, you haven't educated yourself on this particular topic. Actually, we get a lot of material on a lot of issues, and we, you know, we have our packets, and we read, do outside research, and what have you. And I agree with a lot what Councilmember Bagley says. But for me, the one thing that I cannot get over is state law cannot supersede federal law. When I took my oath, I swore to uphold the charter, the Colorado Constitution, and the US Constitution, well, they're in conflict. And I get the adage that, oh, the president said, understand. Could be a new president, one way or another, although the two candidates that are there, I'll write myself in. The fact is, it's still Schedule I, and until Congress changes that, I cannot go forward with a recommendation to open up retail businesses or medical businesses in town. Again, it's not a cop-out, you know, Councilmember Bagley, again, I'll get hit, oh, it's a cop-out, Santos, you're just copying out. No. Do your, you know, I would say, do your homework. You know, if the, you know, if we are a law, a country of laws, then we can remove them. Kind of like with this, I mean, if council decides we could reverse a ban. But again, I would call on the feds, members of Congress. I understand Congressman Polis has always done a bill, but it doesn't get much traction. Why is that? If this is going on in other states, why isn't it getting traction at the federal level to change it? If it's changed, hey, that's a whole different ballgame. I have, you know, no issue coming in with some rules and regulations to put in place, but until then, no. And the other thing is, is that the idea that one person, one group, or one individual's data is not accurate, I find almost laughable, because everyone's got an interest in this. I don't, because I don't partake and don't care to. That's just me. Whether you do or not, that's up to you. However, others have interests. We have folks that are, go out and help those kids and adults with prevention and substance abuse, that's an interest, I get that. There are those that would like facilities in Longmont and, you know, throughout the area. I get that. There's money to be made. There are funds to be given to an organization to help those that have this, you know, it is, in some instances, it is a dependency. But until that federal law is changed, I can, I will not go forward.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, it's obvious to be, from the numbers we saw tonight, we wouldn't be doing this for the money. There's not enough revenue there to make it worth considering as a, as an option to raise revenue without a tax increase. You can get it, too, as has been stated, you can just walk across the Sunset Bridge and buy it right there. So I don't see that, there's not a lack of opportunity for people to buy it in Longmont. And any revenue we would get would probably be sucked up by prevention programs or intervention with people with issues. Banking, what are we going, I mean, this is, that's another federally regulated issue. I mean, one of the big things holding this industry back as a whole is the banking side of this. And I will be supporting Councilman Bagley and Santos in voting no on this, because I don't see a need for it. If you want it, you can buy it, you can grow it, what's the big deal? It's just time for people to just realize that we are not interested in, my personal opinion is, I'm not interested in changing the character of Longmont. I don't think we need that moniker hung around our neck, on this, when we're trying to attract businesses, when we're trying to attract tourism. I don't think it's really the right message to send to the rest of the world, so I won't be supporting it.
Councilmember Pat.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I agree that the revenue is not enough to proceed. However, I am really interested in the research and testing. There's been enough evidence for, to proceed with it on a medical testing route. I actually bought a marijuana patch with absolutely no hallucinatory effects at all for my back, and it worked great. There's, you can have different levels of the hallucinator, I can't even say the word. Yeah, it's the patch, it's bothering me. So the medical part, I don't really have a problem with, and I would like to have the research and the testing in Longmont. It's a, it's a, it is something that is going to go forward in the medical field. It is a good research type of bioscience that I think is worth proceeding with. So that part of it, I would vote for, definitely.
Well, I disagree that, you know, first off, anything that's got a medical benefit shouldn't be a Schedule I drug. And as parents of kids that are epileptic, and that have had great success by treating with all kinds of different cannabinoids, it's proven to be a medical benefit. I proved it myself on a sprained knee. I mean, I could barely walk for two days, and I put some CBD oil on my knee, and the next day, it was like, it was gone. So it has medical benefits, it should never be a Schedule I, so. And yeah, it's here anyway. I think that, you know, I'd like to at least have four medical marijuana shops, so that, and I disagree with, that it doesn't have enough benefits, because if you look at the tax per person, that potential, which I think is probably a fairer way to look at it, shows that it more than pays for itself. You know, well, and then, you know, the other thing is, 58% of the people said that, within Longmont, said that we should legalize it and regulate it, and that's all we're doing here, is just, you know, as an elected official, whether you agree with it or not, you know, our jobs as elected officials is to do what the majority of the people that voted us into office ask us to do. So I'm going to support it. Councilmember Christensen.
Well, when Councilwoman Finlay asked us to explore this, I thought it was a good idea, because this is what everyone in Colorado, every municipality in Colorado has to question whether they want to do. And it's worth doing this research to see what we can get. It is disappointing that it doesn't seem to be, you know, actually financially worth the effort, to me. And that's something that I take very seriously, because there's no point in cumbering ourselves with something that doesn't actually benefit us very much financially. And I also agree with the argument that it will change the character of the town. I've seen this down in Denver, I've seen this in Boulder, I've seen this everywhere. It's gone, and I, that's rather maybe a nebulous concept, but it's also an opportunistic thing, where if you're a kid, and that's what concerns me, you, you know, you don't have as many opportunities. So if there are more opportunities, that's when you're going to use them. And so that, that's a change in character that I don't want us to increase. However, the truth is, as my son told me when I said, oh, well, Longmont, this is about 15 years ago, I said, well, Longmont High doesn't have any drugs, and he said, oh, mom, it's awash with drugs. And so this is not something we're going to get away from, but that's the responsibility of parents to teach their kids, and of schools to teach the kids, and of this community to teach our kids, that this is not something to get involved with, as along with, well, any drugs, or alcohol, or tobacco, and that's our responsibility. So I'm very much torn, but I would like to see medical marijuana, and I do think that, I agree that we have plenty of, we have two facilities that people can go to. I understand that because we only have two for medical marijuana, as the lady said, who uses medical marijuana, there are not very many choices for her, in terms of medical stuff, because there are only two things. It's better when you have more competition. However, I would like to, I would love to see a research facility, because it has been illegal to do research, because it is a Schedule I drug. It should never have been a Schedule I drug. It was, that was political nonsense that has been going on for a long, long time. But if we could get a medical research here... But if we could get a medical research here in Longmont, that would be terrific for this town. Any kind of research facility we can get here is a benefit. So I would like to move forward with some kind of testing facility, if that's a possibility.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Would we have any more marijuana users than we have now, given that you can just walk across the street and buy it, if we had some stores in town? I don't think we would. We already have the problem. We're not gonna have any less of a problem if you now have to walk across some other street to go buy it. It's here. Now, should we choose, several people have asked me, or thought, their thoughts were, that why wouldn't we annex the ones that are closest to us, maybe allow one or two more, and enjoy that revenue? We are seeing by your figures that there isn't enough revenue, really, to make that a worthwhile cause. The only, the only way I, I, I can see it, I don't want marijuana stores on Main Street, none of us do. I, I, I don't think we would ever allow that. It would change the character of our city. Nobody wants that. But to think that because we don't allow them in our city, that less people will use it, I think, is not logical. It's here already, as the police officer has, has testified here today. There's plenty of marijuana use. It's a problem, I've seen this when I talk to CEOs of companies, especially those that have defense contracts, they have trouble finding workers now, because the workers can't pass the drug tests. Is that gonna change if we have a store in Longmont or not? I don't think it is. I think it's gonna be the same. But if we can't make money off it, I'm not sure I, I would, would wanna increase the number of stores we have. I would, though, I, I wouldn't be opposed to having the voters decide whether we have retail establishments and if we should increase taxes. Because if we could increase the tax on it, then we could make money. So I wouldn't be opposed to that, because then we could make money on it. I would not be opposed to testing on research development facilities within the city. But those, just off the top of my head, are my thoughts on it. I, I don't think it will make a lick of difference in the marijuana use of kids or adults if we have a store in town, when essentially, we already have two stores in town. So, that's just my thought on it.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I, I just can't buy in the adage, if it's already here, let's add some more. I, I can't do that either. And the, I, I keep hearing this, number 58% of the residents of Longmont voted for Amendment 64. I get that. However, this is a representative democracy. Sometimes, sometimes you have to save the voters from themselves. You know, we had a, we had a ban on, on a particular type of drilling situation, and a lot of people voted for that, and that didn't stand the Supreme Court. There are other municipalities and states that are voting on things as far as barring people who love each other to get married or use a bathroom. And I'm not taking sides on either one. If it doesn't stick up, if it doesn't stick up in court, it should not, you know, and it doesn't. Just because somebody voted for something, you know, people voted for segregation years ago. Was that right? No. I'm not saying that this is right or wrong. Again, change the schedule. So with that, I move that we take no action and the ban remains in place. However, should Council come back and talk, want to discuss facilities of research, I would be willing to have that conversation.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just FYI, the marijuana facility on Sunset is medical marijuana only. It is not recreational.
On Sunset? I thought it was both.
I've seen it from afar. Seen it from the bridge.
Well, it doesn't seem like I have four votes. Got a motion in a second. So let's vote on this motion. Well, just a minute, you said to take no action. So that, your motion failed.
Apparently not.
Yeah, so it. Yeah, so it failed three to four, with Councilmember Christensen dissenting, Mayor Coombs descending, Councilmember Finley dissenting, and Councilmember Joan Peck dissenting. So, the motion to take no action has failed. You know, I, I think, at the very least, you know, since there's an opportunity to potentially, you know, use the, some portion of the Amgen thing, you know, we're approached to use that potentially as a research facility, and I would hate to shut the door on that type of employment.
Councilmember Christensen.
Yes, that's what I'm, I think that's what we're all thinking, that would be incredible. Have they gone away?
I have no idea.
Well, anyway, I would move to proceed with one or more options presented herein.
Which ones? You have to say which ones.
With testing. And research, yeah.
Do we have a second? Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Okay, let's, let's vote on that.
So, can you repeat the motion one more time?
Okay. I would move to do number two, proceed with one or more options presented in, herein, and that option would be research and testing.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do you want to turn off your mics? Councilmember Bagley.
I guess my question is, the definition of testing. Meaning that, who would approve it? I guess I, I would want the testing to be approved by either the federal or state government, rather than just, you know, "Hey, Eugene, let's go test some pot." So I'd like, I'd like to.
I think it's more research oriented than.
Well, that's what I mean, we need to, I just would like to see it clarified in the motion.
For research purposes. Research and development. Do you want to amend your motion to?
I move to proceed with one or more options presented herein, to allow research and development. What else do I need to say? Research and development.
Well, the federal government doesn't, still thinks it's a Schedule I drug.
Mayor Coombs, if I could just jump in, we, I know there's not, has not been yet, been a second on that, but staff would just, oh, sorry, okay, it's been moved and seconded. So, staff would just point out that testing has actually been defined in state statute. And so, testing, we would assume, would cover research and development, but the state statute is not, does not actually speak to research per se. But under the, an allowance that we could write and bring back to you, regulating testing, we would include research and development as part of that testing. We would, staff would have one question with regard to that, though. Does that, would that include cultivation associated with testing? Testing and research and development. That would be an important distinction.
I would say no, but, it's your motion.
Yes, I think.
And not for resale to retail?
Should I amend it again?
Sure.
Okay, proceed with, I would like to move to proceed with one or more options presented herein, and that would be testing as defined in the state law, and I would like more information on research and development from staff.
Okay. Yes, it's been seconded. I'm waiting for Polly to turn off her mic, so you can.
Councilmember Moore.
So, R and D, how are you defining that, and what are the protocols you use, and whose, what methodologies you use? It's still the same issue that we have before.
Do you want to address that, Sean?
And who's gonna do the testing? Is it, is that a volunteer program?
No, no.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Moore, those are great questions, and those are definitely questions that we can answer when we bring back information about testing, certainly with a number of different options for you to consider and give us further direction on what that looks like.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be defined by the company that is approaching Longmont, as to what their company actually does? I have no idea what research and development in marijuana would look like. I would assume if, if a company does that, they would give us their plan, lay it out.
Mayor Coombs, members of, Councilmember Peck, we, similar to an analysis that we do when a company wants to come in, and we look at the appropriate land use, the appropriate zoning, and other guiding regulations, we would have to fit those facilities into, we would have to really understand their business operation, and then try to fit them into the regulations that we would then craft. I would just point out that we are not aware of any cities that have gone this route, so we would be kind of paving new ground. But the state statute is relatively specific with regard to testing, and then we can expand on that. The state allows us to expand on that, so we can make sure that research and development opportunities related to testing are allowed in anything that we would bring back to you.
Okay, we got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote on that. Okay, that passes six to one, if Councilmember Santos dissenting.
Mayor, Council, one of the things that I was gonna jump in and say is, obviously, when we bring this back, we're gonna have to look to the FDA, because, you know, when they produce pain medications that utilize certain natural chemicals, obviously, there's a process that they have to go through to, to go through that testing. And so that may be the piece that we have to do more in-depth research as we bring that back to you.
Well, I, I think that, you know, obviously, I was in the minority tonight, but I think as people get more and more used to marijuana is not the evil drug that it's been made out to be, and people get more, I guess, educated on it, you know, eventually, you know, things might change. But right now, we're where we're at, and I appreciate everybody's, you know, thoughts on this, and their inputs, and I love this council. Even if we disagree. So, now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak at this time?
Can I go ahead and go?
You bet. Say your name and address for the record.
I'm Deb Roberts, and I actually live in Erie, 2340 Alpine Drive, but I'm the executive director of a nonprofit here in town on 24 Ninth Avenue. Alternatives for Youth is a nonprofit, and we have a program called I Thrive. It's an early intervention program for kids, 12 to 17, that are starting to use drugs and alcohol. And it's also for their parents. So I just want to say that I appreciate very much the decision, at this point, it feels like, to not have any retail stores or medical marijuana stores. We just see just a huge impact with our kids. What we do is we work with the adolescents, as well as with the parents. And we are seeing a huge increase. And I know it's here already, but the, the idea of the perception of harm that kids have is so much lower now, they just don't think there's anything wrong with it. And I think if we added additional stores available to them, they'd think, "Well, it must not be any problem here in Longmont either." So I'm glad we're not doing that. And, you know, Mr. Bagley, as you said, it's the kind of thing where we are number one. There are a lot of issues that go on with kids at that age. You know, the brain keeps growing until they're 25. They really are showing that there's a lot more mental health issues that are cropping up, from schizophrenia to psychosis. And as many of you may know, there is that very, very serious drug of the marijuana called DAB, also called Shatter, it's also called Wax. And it is a very intense THC concentration, and we're seeing more and more of our kids doing that. You all, it's 97% THC. And so we are having kids that are using a DAB and smoking that, and are having psychotic breaks, and they are not coming back from it. So, the marijuana that is there is so much more intense. And I will say, too, that CDE, the Colorado Department of Education, is showing a huge increase in suspensions and expulsions due to that. There's a real correlation between academic failure, there's a real correlation, unfortunately, with suicide increasing, and it just creates incredible, incredible family chaos. We see it. So, I commend you very much, and hope that that will not change, and that you will not have retail stores or medical marijuana stores here in town. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come down and speak?
Mayor, Councilmembers, I guess there's a lot of things I'd like to, oh, sorry, my name is Tyler Henson. I guess there's a lot of things I'd like to retort, but it's, it's late at night. One thing I would, I just wanted to come down here with the vote you guys took around the research and testing facility. So, in state statute, a testing facility that's licensed by the state is prohibited from holding a cultivation license or a manufacture of infused product license. And that was the, that was put in place as a barrier to ensure that because the testing facilities are there for consumer protection, that a testing facility wouldn't, you know, alter their own test to sell their own product. So they are prohibited by that. And we also do not have a state license for research and development for marijuana. So, requesting for a research and development, there's, there's no facility in the state of Colorado that, that cultivates marijuana that's allowed to do research and development. Now, Industrial Hemp has research and development that they can do. Actually, Openape down in Pueblo County got an $8 million economic incentive grant from the city of Pueblo for industrial hemp research to develop for CBD profiles and cannabinoid profiles. That's something the legislature will be looking at next year, of allowing for a research license, but those don't exist yet, so. That's it.
All right, thanks. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Steve Pittman, I'm a resident of Longmont. I'd just like to say, I think you made a wise decision today. I think that research can be done in other cities, I don't think there's a huge benefit for research being done here in Longmont. Having said that, I, I think it will get done, so I don't believe that's a concern. And I believe that, I agree with Councilmember Bagley, that, you know, cigarettes and alcohol and prescription drugs are a problem, and we probably ought to be regulating them a little better than we are. And it's a mistake to kind of throw the same doors open to marijuana here in Longmont. So, thank you very much.
Anybody else like to come down and speak? I guess, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just want to remind everyone that although it's going to be May the 14th, Just want to remind everyone that although it's going to be May the 14th, we'll be celebrating Cinco de Mayo at Roosevelt Park this Saturday, due to weather earlier. So hope to see everybody out there. It's always a lot of fun, good food, good music, good times. Lastly, I would like to say, I have finally joined the council club of those people that finally have Next Light. So, sorry, Councilmember Finley, the section of my town, of my part of town has finally been released, and they came out and installed. The guys were very professional. They do a very good job. And greatly appreciate the help and time and the waiting that others are still doing regarding Next Light. Trust me, it is worth the wait.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Need to have a business of the week. We've passed Mother's Day, so if you're a mother and you didn't really get what you wanted, you might go to Snyder's Jewelry Store. They always have something that you might like. Located at 2201 Ken Pratt, owned and operated by a family who's been in town for a lot of years, went to school with them, and they sell nice, pretty things that if you need a little pick-me-up, do a little retail therapy at Snyder's Jewelry.
Maybe what we should have been really discussing tonight is the real addiction ec, yeah, is sugar, you know? I mean, that's causing far more health problems than everything else is. I mean, 51% of their calories come from, you know, junk, junk food sugars, and that's becoming a real health crisis. I mean, that's a real problem.
No retail selling. We need sugar.
Sure. Okay, that one.
Yeah, that'd be terrible. But anyway, I was kind of disappointed that Cinco de Mayo got delayed, but the weather was pretty horrible. But unfortunately, I won't be able to attend Cinco de Mayo on May the 14th, so I hope you guys have a good time. Oh, yes. Oh, yeah, we went to a Purple Heart ceremony at the park this morning where they showed a new van that they're driving across the country, a wounded marine veteran. And it was a big event at the memorial park this morning at nine o'clock, and it was kind of neat to meet these people that are going across the country in this modified van, and they're going, they started out in Washington, DC, and they'll go all over to all these Purple Heart cities. In fact, Longmont's the only Purple Heart city in Colorado, in the state of Colorado, so that's kind of neat. I guess we're number one in a lot of things, aren't we? So that's, that's good. But it was, except for marijuana sales.
No, we're number one in use.
But anyway, they gave us five placards for Purple Heart people to, that are injured and, you know, have disabilities that, you know, need special parking, so we can decide if there's a few spots that we could put them in, in our city. So anyway, don't we have a coffee for council also coming up pretty quick?
Next week.
Oh, a week from Saturday. Okay. All right. Okay. Any other council comments? Councilmember Christiansen? Oh, Sandy's going to show the...
Oh, cool.
Yes.
Come on down, Sandy.
Yeah.
Sandy Cedar, come on down.
Thank you. I left that in the, yeah, pretty neat, so. That's parking things, so. They gave us five of these if we can use them in our city places.
Nice.
Councilmember Christiansen.
It's nice. So I'd just like to put another plug in for Habitat for Humanity. If you really care about affordable housing, come down and learn to frame, and don't be afraid of a nail gun. They really, really are wonderful group of people, and it's all volunteer. And the people who are getting their houses built are actually down there, too. They have to log 500 hours, and so they're down there working with you, and that's wonderful. Thanks.
Okay, it's time for city manager. Any comments?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney, any comments?
Don't let us down, Eugene.
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Sorry, Mayor, I know you wanted to plot.
I thought I'd be here for you.
The torpedo, you have to try to do it first.